Okay. I'd like to call to order, the, this is going to be a combined meeting of the committee, the whole, and the council voting meeting for July 8, 2019. Would you rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, councilors, let me remind you to stay close to your microphone. We do have a full house. All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice President Culpeper?
Here.
Counselor Lebedinsky?
Here.
Counselor Lindsay?
Here.
Counselor Paez?
Here.
Counselor Proxel?
Here.
President Nguyen?
Here.
There is a quorum.
May I have a quorum? I am seeking approval of a minutes for a council meeting of 6:10, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second. Any additions, corrections, or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And it is, as this time, we have the swearing in of Officer Adam Seener. Chief?
Counselors, if I can, real quick, I want to, I want to thank Judge Palladino for being here in the mayor's absence. We had to reach out to a judge real quick and with short notice, and thank you to Judge Palladino for showing up.
All right, with that being said, I'm going to go through this very slowly. I'm not accustomed to doing this portion of it, but I will do my best. I, Judge Scott Palladino, of the borough of Pottstown in the county of Montgomery and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, by virtue of authority vested in me in the borough chapter of the county of Montgomery, as amended and supplemented by the General Borough Act of 1915, and supplements authorizing a police force for boroughs and for other purposes pursuant to the appointment of a police officer by town council. This borough have, on this date, have sworn Adam Seener as a police officer of said borough, and that he is authorized and empowered to make arrests upon probable cause with or without a warrant, subject nevertheless, nevertheless to laws of Pennsylvania and those of the United States. And that said, Adam Seener shall serve as such a police officer during the pleasure of the mayor and this town council. Having been appointed as a police officer?
As been appointed as a police officer.
With the borough of Pottstown?
With the borough of Pottstown.
In the county of Montgomery?
In the county of Montgomery.
And the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
And the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
I, Adam Seener?
I, Adam Seener.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support?
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth?
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will enforce the laws, therefore including?
I will enforce the laws, therefore including?
Those of the borough of Pottstown?
Those of the borough of Pottstown.
And that I will support, obey, and defend?
And I will support, obey, and defend.
The laws without consideration to a person of race?
Laws without consideration to persons of race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious?
Religious.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
I swear to discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and honor.
I swear to discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I hope I don't shout yet. I think so. One second. It's like prom. Thank you. Congratulations, welcome. Thank you. Congratulations. That was a very, thank you. I know there's babies. I see children. You should pay attention. I know there's babies. It's funny how. Okay, at this time, here, comments from our citizens, please note you have a three-minute time limit.
All right, Tracy Daywall, please.
I don't need the mic, I got good enough now. Good morning, everyone, well, good evening, everybody, I'm the council solicitor and borough manager. The reason why I'm coming up here to talk to everybody is because I put a letter on everybody's, the council manager's name, and I have a problem with the trash. I've owned my house over seven, almost seven years. Half the year, my trash does not get picked up. I've talked to Dan, Don, and a couple other councilmen and the mayor about this. When as far as I've got contacted by the lawyer from J.B. Mascara that had a meeting with you the other day, I just got off the phone with him before I came in today, I refused to pay my trash bill. I got a Deloitte letter. Then I got a letter saying my water's going to get shut off. Half the year my trash gets picked up, the other half of my year, my trash does not get picked up. Nothing's being done in our head, on our, on our, the residents behalf of between the bills, we're getting it taken care of. They won't be calling, but in the office up here, they turn around and tell us, oh, well, there's new, you know, new people, this and that. That's not helping us, trash is still sitting out there. The other thing I want to talk to you about is, I just had a thousand dollar bill on my truck because of the potholes and the people parking, where it says no parking, then we have to drive up on the sidewalk on Third or on Penn Street to get around them, to get to our residents, because there's no other way to get into our property. So, and I did put it in front of council members, named the lawyer's information that he told me that I could give, and also the Deloitte letter that I got, and the shut-off notice that I got, because I refused to pay my trash bill until it was picked up. Now, as far as it is, they're going to blow the horn when they come in front of my house, when they pick up my trash. That's being from the lawyer. So I know they're out there. And the other day, Saturday, when they picked up the trash on Wilson Street, the trash truck was parked on the wrong side of the road, when I went to go around them, I'm going to send one of their helpers, and I talked to the lawyer about that too. So, maybe something can be done, because I get to stay in trash bill, but my trash is not being picked up all year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Bill Ducommun?
Duke. Duke.
I'm Bill Duke, I live at 1502 Glasgow Street, and I have a citizen's concern about the bump southbound Wilson Street at Farmington Avenue. The speed limit is 25 mile an hour, and if you take your vehicle over that, you will hit bottom and scrape the asphalt. I know if you go out there and look, you can see that the southbound lane has been scraped many times. I recommend a, either bump ahead sign on Wilson Street going south, and also one going north, or maybe a reduction in the speed limit, but I think something should be done to alleviate that severe bump. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I, could someone move those, I don't know what they're for, but somebody's going to possibly trip over them, I don't know. Sorry.
They belong to the borough.
But we don't want anybody to, we don't want anybody to hurt themselves.
Bob Brown, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm up here, I am from Ward 7, okay? I'm here because of the way that a lot of the residents are treated up there. And I'm saying that in this respect. We have kids out there, school's out, they need to play, they need to have access to facilities, gates being locked, all those kind of things. And on top of that, I have a history, I guess, with this borough, because I used to be the program director at the center back in 1980. And it seems like when things get cut, they get cut from over there. So if you take resources out of an area, guess what's going to happen? You're going to have a blank. Okay? So, I need to throw to you the reason why we need those things over there, because we got kids over there, they need resources too. They need to be able to grow up in a safe environment. They need all these things, and it's not happening over there. Like I said, I have a history, I've been involved with this since 1980, and the same thing is going on. So, I'm going to throw, you know, I'm going to be the elephant in the room, and I'm throwing these questions at you, and, you know, some of you weren't here on the board and all that kind of stuff, I understand that, but I'm throwing up the red flag, because I need some answers about why that area is the one that gets cut all the time. So, I'm throwing it to you, I'm telling you, because it seems like to me that the problem is, if you have kids over there, they don't have anything to do, they get locked out, something happens, the policy is to lock them up, and that's unacceptable. Okay? I got a nephew who is 10, and when they went over there to do their basketball league, they were told they couldn't deal, over at the center. Okay? And I got to explain to him why that didn't happen. He's 10. So, I'm throwing it to you, just letting you know what's going on in my eyes, because I've seen it for a long time. Okay?
Thank you.
Bruce Madera, please.
Good evening, Bruce Madera, and Mike Smo tonight, we've got to have something good to say about our number of employees. First of all, Mr. Lenhart of Parks and Rec, I've talked to him about an issue or two, and he listened, and we were trying to work something out, but there were complications. So he listens to ideas, and there are many employees that, I'm not just singling any one or two people out, but especially, I'm one person, am I from Mars or what, but I'm overwhelmed by this fireworks craze, and I've had several talks, including one just a little while ago, on the phone with the chief of police, and he is, is a remarkable man, he listens to you with, with maturity, he doesn't treat you like a 50-year-old kid talking to him or anything, with respect, and I appreciate that. I realize what the situation is, and several of the officers that I've talked to and the chief, I think we're all in agreement that the cause of this was the legislature in 2017 legalizing the heavier duty stuff, with all the reports of people getting injured around the country with this. And some people get carried away up where I live in Bull Chicken Hill and Adams Street, they start two weeks before the fourth, and it was going on last night during the rain. I mean, as a kid, I was never out in the rain doing fireworks, I mean, I guess I was a bright kid or something for a dumb kid, you know. I don't know what more the chief, the police can do, and I'm not faulting them, the chief tells me they're overwhelmed with calls, not just on the third or fourth, of course, but this is all through this period, it may not be over yet. Maybe the reason I came to council tonight was really to get, not to have a quiet night to hear this stuff. So, the latest, the very latest, and I'll wrap it up, is that, just in yesterday's paper Eagle, I see the legislature, some people in the House are trying to, going to try to redo the mistake they made, and again, I was talking to the chief about this, and I don't know that it can be redone. People are the way they are, but this is a darn noisy town compared to when I bought my house 36 years ago.
You have 30 seconds to finish.
All right, so that's pretty much what I have to say. I don't know what can be done, but I have some older neighbors than myself, I'm not so young anymore, especially these hot nights sitting out. You don't need this stuff going on for hours, because somebody's mentally reverting back to age eight or something. So that's it, I appreciate the chief and his officers making an effort in this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine Wiggins, please.
You said Janie Wiggins.
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to speak on my godmother's behalf. She's 89 years old, and we have a problem, now the kids are out of school, so it's not the really bad, bad problem right now, but her property meets the middle school, and her property goes back to the high school. We don't have a problem with the high school children, it's the kids from the middle, the middle school. They run up in the yard, they run up on her, they have broke her windows, I'm tired of replacing windows, you call the school. Oh, there's nothing we can do about it. I think it's time somebody starts getting on the parents, they need to start correcting these children. This starts at home. This is not school problems, this is parents' problems, and destructing, you know, breaking other people's property, especially an 89-year-old that lives on a minimum income. And then we're out there trying to fix her house, and somebody says, I'm going to get a permit, told me that we had to have a licensed contractor. Since when do you have to have a licensed contractor, as long as you buy a permit? I'm not buying a permit till we've ripped it all down to find out what was wet and how the weather, we need to redo it on her front porch. I mean, this is getting out of hand. I mean, she lives on $812 a month, she has never been late in her taxes, she's never been late on her sewer and garbage, they don't pick the garbage up half the time, and this is ridiculous. She goes without eating, we make her food and take it to her, because she's not buying food, because she has to take every penny she has to pay the borough. You know, this is, and it's not just her, this is, I'm speaking for every senior citizen in this town. They need help, and it's time we all join together and start doing something about it, and clean our town like Phoenixville cleaned up theirs. Our town has turned into a ghost town. When I was growing up, there was all kinds of stores here, everything. You run down High Street, now you've got all these empty buildings. This is ridiculous. Weisenhorn was there ever since I was a child. Where are they at? Phoenixville. Something needs to be done, and if you need, you know, help, let us know, and we all jump in and just get a plan, and let's turn this town around. Stop the killers. Thank you.
All right, Lisa Thornton.
I don't have any other comments, the lady, earlier she, she had our meeting statement earlier.
Okay. Nicolette Sandberg?
Sandberg.
Sandberg.
So, a month ago, I was here at the gym meeting, and like Tracy, I'm here to talk about Mascara trash. June 10th came and went after I brought to your attention the sporadic service from Mascara. The week of June 24th, I had a call to get my yard waste picked up on Wednesday, they didn't come till Thursday. On Friday, for my garbage, the whole street of 770 block North Washington Street by the school was not picked up, the whole street. That sat out there Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in the hot weather, with flies, stunk, and we had to wait until Monday for Mascara to pick it up. So here's the thing, there's two people making out on this deal. The borough was getting paid, Mascara was getting paid, and I keep shelling out money for a service that I'm not getting. So from here on in, what I'm going to do, and I've called Mr. Yoder 100 times, and I've spoken to Mascara 100 times, most recently to Mark Talbott, the general manager, I am so sick and tired of hearing excuses, so sick and tired, it's not my problem, you have a contract with Mascara, I assume, correct? There's an annual contract with them? They're probably chosen because they're the lowest bidder, so it goes to show that you get what you pay for. So here's what's going to happen from here on in, I'm going to calculate my quarterly bill and determine how much it is a day, and for every time my trash, my yard waste, and my recycle is not picked up, I'm withholding that money from the borough, you should withhold that money from Mascara, and I will put that money in an escrow account until this is straightened out. I am so tired of the excuses. I do everything right, I put it out on the right day, I use the right blue, I use the right red, I use the right bags, and it's just, they're terrible. I have seen them come down Wilson Street, look down my street, they must be blind, or lazy, or both, and they can see them out there, and they don't come to get them. So we need to find out why. Or, if you go out for bids, I'd rather pay more money for a service that I'm getting that's reliable, and that comes every time they're supposed to come. I'm willing to do that, than to keep forking out money for a service that I'm not getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Kelly, please.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for letting me talk. I live down on Park Court, right off of Roland, and about a year ago, when the bike lane brigade decided to put these bike lanes across Jackson Street, down Roland, north Roland, down, south Roland, they met with the neighbors that lived up and down those streets, and we were told that, I don't know if it was the borough, or the bike lane brigade, or whoever, they were going to maintain these bike lanes, okay? To this day, with the exception of putting up those goofy little signs that say no winter maintenance, they should have just put up no maintenance at all, because, see these six, I, I'm the one that's doing the maintenance along Roland Street. These are knocked down on Roland and knocked down on Jackson Street. Whoever the bike brigade people are, they have yet to come down and maintain any of the debris that's gathered around the bike lanes. That's number one. Number two, probably should have been number one, the bike lanes are a joke, okay? The police department doesn't like them, I know that, because I've talked to a couple at the random spaces, places, I know the public works doesn't like them, the residents of Roland and Jackson Street sure as heck don't like them. The only people that I've seen on the bike lanes, except for a couple kids doing wheelies, every day, the mailman come down the inside lane of the bike lanes, every day, six days a week. U.S. Postal Service, I've seen contractors that are doing work at different people's houses, they park inside the bike lanes, or they go into somebody's driveway, but if they have more than one truck, they have to park outside. The trash men, follow a trash truck, Mascara, excuse me, but follow a trash truck down Jackson from Kine to where it meets Beach. It's a joke. It's an absolute, and no one uses them. No one, whatever the intent was, this isn't Seattle, Washington, or Portland, Oregon, where you have a lot of, you know, Starbucks people, this is Pottstown. I love my town, I'm from Pottstown, as all these residents are too, but it's, the bike lanes should never have been put up, and I just really would appreciate it if someone would evaluate why we put them up, not necessarily why, but, you know, moving forward, they should come down. They get knocked down, they get pulled down, they get whatever, but they're not-
You have 15 seconds.
...being maintained by the bike patrol, or whoever they are, and the borough sure as heck shouldn't be expected to do something that they didn't want to begin with. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and these are yours, by the way, or they belong to somebody, but they don't belong to me, but, you know, I'm doing the maintenance, so here they are.
Okay, Bill Robertson, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'm a board member of the Strive Initiative. We had submitted a proposal, along with Alabot Boys and Girls Club, to manage the Ricketts Center, and we've heard back from council on a little bit of what's been going on, but we sent an email on June 25th to get an update on a number of issues from council, and we did not get a response back from, from anyone on that, and then we found out tonight that there was a vote that was going to be happening on, on that, and you've heard a number of people talk about concern that the community is not being taken seriously, and that voices are not being heard. There may be incredibly good reasons why the council was deciding to vote on that tonight, but to not respond and provide information to one of the organizations that's trying to do community activism, and to not provide information on that, to me, illustrates why we're having a lot of the problems that we're having. And I wanted to go on record and make sure that that was heard by everyone here, obviously at the meeting tonight, but also in public. We need to do better, I hope there's a great reason why our questions were not answered, but on June 25th, we stand here a number of days later, and to me, it's just extremely disappointing that there has not been a dialogue about what's happening. I know that the Alabot Boys and Girls Club cares tremendously about what they're trying to do, and the Strive Initiative does as well, and to not have a set of representatives here that's willing to have an open dialogue about this very subject is extremely disappointing as a citizen, and I really hope that the vote that you make tonight is for all of these people, and all the citizens of Pottstown, because we can do better.
Thank you.
Okay, no further comments from citizens present?
Take great.
Please, young man, thank you.
Oh, sure, yeah, just, just sign your name there.
I mean, this is getting out of hand. I mean, she lives on eight hundred and twelve dollars a month. She has never been late in her taxes. She's never been late on her sewer and garbage. They don't pick the garbage up half the time. And this is ridiculous. She goes without eating. We make her food and take it to her because she's not buying food because she has to take every penny she has to pay the borough. You know, this is, and it's not just her. This is, I'm speaking for every senior citizen in this town. They need help. And it's time we all join together and start doing something about it. And clean our town like Phoenixville cleaned up theirs. Our town has turned into a ghost town. When I was growing up, there was all kinds of stores here, everything. You run down High Street now, you've got all these empty buildings. This is ridiculous. Weisenhorn was there ever since I was a child. Where are they at? Phoenixville. Something needs to be done. And if you need, you know, help, let us know and we all jump in and just get a plan. And let's turn this town around. Stop the killers. Thank you.
All right, Lisa Thorp.
Um, I don't have any other comments. The lady earlier, she had our meeting statement earlier.
Okay. Nicolette Sandberg.
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 So, a month ago, I was here at the gym meeting. And like Tracy, I'm here to talk about Mascara trash. June tenth came and went after I brought to your attention the sporadic service from Mascara. The week of June twenty-fourth, I had a call to get my yard waste picked up on Wednesday. They didn't come till Thursday. On Friday, for my garbage, the whole street of seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred block of North Washington Street by the school was not picked up. The whole street. That sat out there Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in the hot weather with flies, stunk, and we had to wait until Monday for Mascara to pick it up. So here's the thing. There's two people making out on this deal. The borough was getting paid. Mascara was getting paid. And I keep shelling out money for a service that I'm not getting. So from here on in, what I'm going to do, and I've called Mr. Yoder a hundred times, and I've spoken to Mascara a hundred times, most recently to Mark Talbott, the general manager. I am so sick and tired of hearing excuses. So sick and tired. It's not my problem. You have a contract with Mascara, I assume, correct? There's an annual contract with them? They're probably chosen because they're their lowest bidder, so it goes to show that you get what you pay for. So here's what's going to happen from here on in. I'm going to calculate my quarterly bill and determine how much it is a day. And for every time my trash, my yard waste, and my recycle is not picked up, I'm withholding that money from the borough. You should withhold that money from Mascara. And I will put that money in an escrow account until this is straightened out. I am so tired of the excuses. I do everything right. I put it out on the right day. I use the right blue. I use the right red. I use the right bags. And it's just, they're terrible. I have seen them come down Wilson Street, look down my street. They must be blind, or lazy, or both. And they can see them out there, and they don't come to get them. So we need to find out why. Or, if you go out for bids, I'd rather pay more money for a service than I'm getting that's reliable and that comes every time they're supposed to come. I'm willing to do that and to keep forking out money for a service that I'm not getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Kelly, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting me talk. I live down on Park Court, right off of Roland. And about a year ago, when the Bike Lane Brigade decided to put these bike lanes across Jackson Street, down Roland, north Roland, down, south Roland, they met with the neighbors that lived up and down those streets. And we were told that, I don't know if it was the borough or the Bike Lane Brigade or whoever, they were going to maintain these bike lanes, okay? To this day, with the exception of putting up those goofy little signs that say "No Winter Maintenance," they should have just put up "No Maintenance" at all. Because, see these six? I'm the one that's doing maintenance along Roland Street. These are knocked down on Roland and knocked down on Jackson Street. Whoever the Bike Brigade people are, they have yet to come down and maintain any of the debris that's gathered around the bike lanes. That's number one. Number two, probably should have been number one, the bike lanes are a joke, okay? The police department doesn't like them. I know that because I've talked to a couple at the random spaces, places. I know the public works doesn't like them. The residents of Roland and Jackson Street sure as heck don't like them. The only people that I've seen on the bike lanes, except for a couple kids doing wheelies, every day, the mailmen come down the inside lane of the bike lanes. Every day. Six days a week. U.S. Postal Service. I've seen contractors that are doing work at different people's houses, they park inside the bike lanes. Or they go into somebody's driveway. But if they have more than one truck, they have to park outside. The trash men. Follow a trash truck, Mascara, excuse me, but follow a trash truck down Jackson from Kine to where it meets Beach. It's a joke. It's an absolute, and no one uses them. No one, whatever the intent was, this isn't Seattle, Washington, or Portland, Oregon, where you have a lot of, you know, Starbucks people. This is Pottstown. I love my town. I'm from Pottstown, as all these residents are too. But it's, the bike lanes should never have been put up. And I just really would appreciate it if someone would evaluate why we put them up, not necessarily why, but, you know, moving forward, they should come down. They get knocked down, they get pulled down, they get whatever. But they're not being maintained by the Bike Patrol or whoever they are. And the borough sure as heck shouldn't be expected to do something that they didn't want to begin with. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. And these are yours, by the way, or they belong to somebody, but they don't belong to me, but, you know, I'm doing the maintenance, so here they are.
Okay. Bill Robertson, please.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I'm a board member of the Strive Initiative. We had submitted a proposal along with Alabot Boys and Girls Club to manage the Ricketts Center. And we've heard back from council on a little bit of what's been going on, but we sent an email on June twenty-fifth to get an update on a number of issues from council. And we did not get a response back from anyone on that. And then we found out tonight that there was a vote that was going to be happening on that. And you've heard a number of people talk about concern that the community is not being taken seriously and that voices are not being heard. There may be incredibly good reasons why the council was deciding to vote on that tonight. But to not respond and provide information to one of the organizations that's trying to do community activism and to not provide information on that, to me, illustrates why we're having a lot of the problems that we're having. And I wanted to go on record and make sure that that was heard by everyone here, obviously at the meeting tonight, but also in public. We need to do better. I hope there's a great reason why our questions were not answered. But on June twenty-fifth, we stand here a number of days later, and to me, it's just extremely disappointing that there has not been a dialogue about what's happening. I know that the Alabot Boys and Girls Club cares tremendously about what they're trying to do, and the Strive Initiative does as well. And to not have a set of representatives here that's willing to have an open dialogue about this very subject is extremely disappointing as a citizen. And I really hope that the vote that you make tonight is for all of these people and all of the citizens of Pottstown, because we can do better.
Thank you.
Okay. No further comments from citizens present.
Take care.
Oh, sure. Yeah, just, uh... Just sign your name there.
I guess a decision was made on behalf of just the borough and kind of a couple of other people that closed the Ricketts Center at eight o'clock, that kind of pushed kids on the street before the sun went down. And that kind of really didn't seem feasible at first. So I got in contact with Police Markovich, and he kind of intervened, that relationship kind of got it pushed back until dusk and dawn. But that decision to kind of close at eight o'clock kind of puts an impact on the entire community, because that forces the kids that were at the center to go elsewhere in the area, and that kind of causes other issues. Two, the person who redid the basketball court, his name's William Ellington, he's one of my, one of my closest friends. He plays for the New York Knicks right now. His grandma grew up on Waller Street, directly across the street from him. So him redoing the basketball court was for kids to have the opportunity to pursue their dreams and pursue their aspirations without gates being locked, without things being done, without things being turned according to that they don't have the opportunity that they don't have. That was our big issue. So we're kind of just fighting. I'm sitting in church one day, my phone's blowing up fifteen cars. Why are the gates locked? It was Memorial Day, it first happened Memorial Day. So we're trying to figure it out. So I get ahold of Mr. Kirkland, he's not here right now. I get ahold of Mr. Kirkland, a couple of people, just kind of see what we can do to kind of alleviate these issues and kind of grow about it a different way. So my biggest concern is having these kids on the streets, in the bike lanes, riding, getting hit by cars when they really have avenue up there, no property damage. I know there might have been a few issues during the daytime, but that's not nighttime. That's, you've got to arrest people, I totally understand. That's happened in any park in the world. Happens down riverfront, happens through the street, happens all over. So we just want to make sure that the center's not the only place that's being locked up and being forced to close at eight thirty and certain issues that are going to be very detrimental all summer. Very often in the summer, put kids on the street at eight o'clock. So that was one of our big issues. So I greatly appreciate you hearing us out. I'm sorry for, I apologize for being late. We're coming fresh from our mentoring program that we just had. So we just got done, we had to cut our meeting short. So that's why I apologize for being late. I apologize. Thank you for taking your time.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else from your group? There was Andy De Jesus.
My name is Andy De Jesus. I'm a federal agent and I, with homeless security. And I say that not to boast on myself, but I'm a product of the Philadelphia street system, really. I grew up in the Badlands. I'm sorry?
Make your address toward council.
I apologize. I had everybody so here. So I'm a, I'm a product of the Philadelphia streets and the Badlands specifically. And I share this with you guys because one of the things that saved my life was having a playground in the back of my, my house. And from eight o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night, we played basketball, baseball, football, everything you could imagine. And it really got me off the streets. What these kids are asking for is, you know, I heard some of the complaints of the residents here in Pottstown. They're saying they're kids that are breaking windows, that are doing all kinds of things. If you close the basketball courts, if you close the one system, the one outlet that they have to actually get rid of this energy, extra energy that they have, that's exactly what they're going to end up doing. So it makes no sense to lock the system, the gates around it. And like I said, I'm a product of that. And, and the same thing with even the police department. Again, I'm a federal agent. I have some contacts here in the police, Pottstown, the Pottstown Police Department as well. And I would love to see even more interaction with the police department, coming in there and just goofing off with some of the kids, just shooting some baskets, just connecting with the, with the kids in that area. I've, I've done some of that with, with Terrance, David Charles. Most of you guys know David Charles as well. And we're trying to connect with the kids in a way, not just complain, not just say, "Hey, we're tired of the kids doing this," or "Tired of the parents." We're actually getting involved and being a part of these kids. So that's what they need. They need people to step up and not just make excuses or complain, but actually be involved and be a part of it. We have a group of people that are doing that right now. So I just want to thank you for your time, and I implore you to please keep those gates open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes citizens' comment.
Okay. Under Subcommittee Reports, Finance Administration did not meet for this month. Infrastructure, Vice President Kopp? Anything?
Oh, you said you were finance? Sorry.
Yeah, we didn't meet. Okay.
I was just reading my... Okay. Licensing and inspection, doing well on permits, Coz doing well, inspections going well, not too much more to say about that. Parks and Rec, Spray Park is working well. They had to do some repairs in the early year, but it's doing okay now. August twenty-sixth, the eighth Spray Park will be closing for construction on phase three of the park. Ricketts roof is about three weeks, it'll take about three weeks to replace, so it will be probably closed for a month. Is that right?
Continue their summer operations there. There's temporary air conditioning units in the building now so that they can continue to run their program in the presence of that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we had the rumble. That was a, that was a success. And I didn't hear too much about fireworks, but I did hear that they were very good. They're going to redesign park signs and have them installed. And there's a lot of problem with the ash trees down at Riverfront Park, and I guess most of them are going to have to come down. Maple Street's in good order. Maple Court's finished and in use with new pavilion. And nothing going on with Pollock Park. What else am I? That's Doug's.
Doug's?
Huh? Public Works, pre-construction for paving. CTV's now moved into part of the old garage. And there's specs up for the new trash bids, which I know everybody wants to hear about that. And we're looking into bad trash pickups and that type of thing. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you. It is seven thirty, and we have scheduled a public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment for downtown. And at this time, I'll turn this meeting over to our solicitor, Mr. Orner.
Thank you, Mr. Ween. As you indicated, we've advertised a public hearing for the purpose of taking public comment this evening on proposed changes to the borough zoning ordinance. This type of hearing is required anytime a municipality wishes to amend its zoning ordinance. In this case, the ordinance changes relate primarily to the downtown district. You'll recall that a couple months ago, there were some significant changes to the downtown district. Going through the Ad Hoc Zoning Ordinance Review Committee, there's a couple minor changes that the committee has recommended, and that's what's in front of council this evening. Those changes would include the following. The elimination of childcare facilities in the downtown by conditional use. Better defining outdoor dining areas to include sidewalk dining as opposed to merely outdoor dining. Permitting outdoor dining or sidewalk dining within fifteen feet of transit stops. Previously, this had not been permitted. And finally, eliminating proximity or separation distances for certain uses such as bars and taverns. All of these would be changes to the downtown district. Procedurally, this public hearing was advertised in the mercury on June twenty-first and June twenty-eighth of this year. Notice of the ordinance changes were provided both to the local planning commission and the county planning commission. We have received a letter from Montgomery County Planning Commission dated July second. It indicates that the county is supportive of the changes that are being proposed this evening. And without further ado, if there's any residents that wish to address Borough Council with respect to the ordinance changes, now would be the time. We'd acknowledge you, take your name and address, and you can provide whatever comment you might have to Borough Council. Is there anyone that wishes to address council specifically on the zoning ordinance changes as part of the public hearing? Mr. President, it appears that there is no public comment. This hearing has satisfied the requirement under the MPC. I would note that in the new business portion of the agenda, this ordinance has been listed so council can consider it for adoption this evening if it wishes. Mr. Prosskell, do you have anything else to add on behalf of the Ad Hoc Committee?
No, you summed it up perfectly.
Okay. Thank you. You can go back to the regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Orner. Okay. Back under Boards and Committee Reports, no, no, I'm sorry, Subcommittees, Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
So I wanted to talk about businesses. We often talk about the new businesses that are moving into town, but less than a month ago, on June twentieth, Tri-County Area Chamber and Pade co-sponsored an event. This is the third annual Pottstown Progress. And we did recognize businesses over the decades that have been here, and I wanted to brief you on that list of those that were recognized. We were lucky enough to have Council President Ween with us that day to celebrate those businesses. So we celebrated Dana Corporation, which has been here for a hundred years. We celebrated Cody Systems from nineteen seventy. There were two from nineteen eighty, Bass Catered Events and Pottstown Industrial Complex. Precision Polymer also had moved into the borough. Smale's Printery, Franz Architects, Evans Hausman, O'Donnell Weiss and Mete. And then there was a special award for Video Ray, which was the first wave of pioneers. Video Ray, Scott Bentley, the owner of that company, the president of the company, has clearly stated that he moved to Pottstown because of amenities for his employees like the Silver River Playhouse and the Trail and the River. We also recognized the Storb family, those long-term residents that know that the Storbs had a travel agency and successful businesses within the borough for many years. The Storb family really graciously helped other businesses, new businesses. Pottstown United Brewing Company, where it is now located, was sold at a very favorable rate to those current owners, to that current owner, so that he would be able to do something with the building that dearly needed some help and was very gracious in a favorable price to that person. As well as contributing and financing the facade upgrades that needed to be done to the building so that Tompkins Bist could be committed to move into the downtown. So we don't want to constantly forget all the things that have come before to lead to where we are today. It's my job to refute that businesses are moving out of Pottstown. They may not be the same businesses, but they are changing businesses. I had the pleasure of being here this weekend. I had some vacation days, but I came back to Pottstown. I don't live in the borough, but I came to Pottstown to celebrate. The fireworks were great, and it was wonderful to see the car show, and the alley opened up. Elvis was here, and although the, although the weather cut it short, the celebration short in the streets, it was really great. I know that the farmer's market, soon to be renamed the High Street Terminal, is full with tenants. There's a great New Delhi in there. I Corumba, they did very well. So, you know, the weather was a help to them because of brave people indoors, and those merchants were extremely happy in their first weekend to be open. So there's a lot to be proud of. Last thing that I would suggest for you from a business perspective is to please look on Facebook pages and the I Pick Pottstown website. There are some new vignettes that are being posted there. One is of Louis Rieger, who is a member of the Board, the Board, Pade Board. He has been in town for twelve years. He has a very successful business called High Street Music, and he will be growing within the next couple of years to a building that has been empty for a very long time and really putting a venue together, a music venue that also will support the school and recording studio. So that's something to look forward to. And lastly, we are looking to a solution. We have heard the cries for "We need a community calendar." Pade is taking this on through I Pick Pottstown. Justin and I have been in communication about how we might be able to do it in an affordable manner, and we will do our best to be able to get that up and running by the end of the summer for the events that can be loaded. And it can be a one-stop shop for people to go to find out what's happening within the borough. For now, the Tri-County Area Chamber is more than happy. For no charge, they will take those calendar events and do not have to be a member. They will post them on their website. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Transportation, Vice President Kopp?
No meeting.
All right. Ad Hoc Zoning Counselor, Prosskell.
We tidied up on the subjects that we just discussed with the outdoor, I guess, excuse me, outdoor dining and daycares. And in the majority of the meeting was, we talked about the type of signs that can be displayed in windows in the downtown zoning area.
Very good. Efficiency Methods Committee Counselor Libidens.
Quick meeting today. We just reviewed some of the documentation in ad hoc zoning and the language updates for fruit trucks and grading. The database coordination progress has been going well with building in commercial for the fire marshal, the commercial properties for the fire marshals to be included and updated and available across the database. We also had, talked about some of the wordage or verbiage for the signage along High Street and the percentage of coverage that we're currently required to have. And that's about it.
Thank you. Under Boards and Committees, Kopp?
No meeting.
No meeting. EAC, Mr. Durd tells me they did not have a quorum. Regional Planning, Counselor Prosskell.
We had a presentation from Greg Calistrà from Pottstown Health and Wellness. Basically, he gave an overview of like how we're doing health-wise against other municipalities in the region and the state.
Okay. All I have, you, lighted property?
No, it's in your packet.
Emergencies Services Reports. Anything, Chief? Or? No one from the fire companies. Oh. Sorry, I didn't see you.
I was sitting back there.
Ah, okay. There you go, Chief.
So we had a pretty uneventful month in June. We only had seventy-six fire responses, which brought us up to five hundred and twenty for the year. We had four building fires reported, and they were all minimal. We only had fifteen hundred hours in damage due to the quick response of the firefighter to get there. We had five unitway responses, which is way down. We participated with the fireworks and had a good turnout of volunteers that night. They stuck after the rain, and the biggest fire we had that night was Mark Gibson's fire truck. Kind of had a little issue. But other than that, we've, we've pretty insignificant month.
Okay. Thank you. Human Relations, Ms. Levin.
Hi.
Very quickly. Good evening, councilors, council president, and my wife is not here this evening. Just a little F.I.I. July is National Ice Cream Month, and National Ice Cream Day is the Thursday, Sunday in July, July the twenty-first. On Tuesday, June the eleventh, a representative from the Pennsylvania Hearing Relations Commission presented an educational program on diversity and inclusion. And the commission's next meeting is tomorrow evening, Tuesday, July the eighth, at six p.m. in council chambers. And all are welcome to attend.
Very good. Land Bank.
Ms. Penrod.
In the interest of time on a long night, we are working on acquisition policies, disposition policies, reviewing sources of grants to get us going with purchases and administrative costs, and communication in lay terms explaining how land banks fit in with all the other resources to return nonproductive property to the tax rolls.
Okay. And while you're there, how about the library?
Again, thank you for your support of the library. As part of our fundraising, we've enrolled in something called Amazon Smile, which is a rebate program for your favorite nonprofit, which I presume we are. And so anything you get from Amazon, just go to amazon dot smile dot com instead of wherever it is you normally go. We're also going to be participating in the Amazing Raise, Raise, get it, Amazing Raise program sponsored by Tri-County Network later on this year. And for cost savings, which I guess is a form of fundraising, our executive director, Michelle Keigho, took advantage of an offer, a very generous offer from the Hill School... our executive director, Michelle Keough, took advantage of an offer, a very generous offer from the Hill School for some furniture that they made available to a bunch of nonprofits in the area. We took, we were the recipient of about 20 small chairs and 20 small tables and chairs, which will give us a great deal of flexibility at no cost for our programming. And speaking of programming, participation in our summer programs is about three times of what it was last summer, which is just absolutely amazing. The kids' programs include a Summer of Space to honor 50 years of the moon landing. We also have a magic show, painting class, and a hydroponic gardening, in case you've never figured out how to raise lettuce in a glass of water. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Olivet Boys and Girls Counselor Kirkland's not here. Pottstown School District Counselor Lindsey, any action?
Ah, yes. So, let me, I'm gonna briefly talk about June 12th. We went, that was the power thing. We went to Harrisburg. That was awesome. And I want to thank Ryan and his wife. They came. It was really nice. But I'll get in details with that, but let me go into my notes here, sorry. So, at the school board meeting, the JROTC Distinguished Unit Award with Lieutenant James Porter and Madam President Frances, she put the award on the flag. So, they presented the flag, and then she put this little ribbon on there. Peggy Lee Clark presented the Pottstown Area Industrial Development Report, the same report that she showed us. Edgewood did not pass to move forward, so the fifth graders will remain in the middle school. Kids are getting Chrome books, and if you want to participate and voice your opinion to legislators in Harrisburg, there are, there's information, if you have Facebook, for advocates for Pottstown Facebook page. So, that's it for the school board.
Thank you. We will not have a mayor's report. She's still recovering and healing.
Yes.
We wish her well. Managers' report.
All right. Thank you. Well, we've been busy this month with, and the previous month, with a lot of events, from the Rumble to the first stop for the first-ever Trails on Tap, which we were very happy to host. We had a very nice turnout down there in the park those days. Also, the car shows have been going quite well when they can get the good weather, which it held out just enough, I think, this past weekend. And, you know, Pottstown really knows how to celebrate the Fourth with a great Fourth of July parade and a wonderful event with family-friendly activities and fireworks in the park. All reports are that everything went well. I attended a lot of ribbon cuttings in the downtown this month, hosted by the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce. So, Twice is Nice, which is a boutique consignment shop, they had their ribbon cutting, as well as Rivsters on High, which is an ice cream shop, and the Montesano Brothers in the Newark Plaza as well. So, lots going on in the downtown. There's going to be more businesses opening up, more to come in that regard. We're currently working on a couple little projects in the downtown, and one is focused on the Clock Tower area. So, right now, we're looking for sponsors to have the pillars on the Clock Tower at Charlotte and High covered up with not plaster, but stucco. And we're going to call it the Pillars of Pottstown. And then, we are also going to replace the clock with a historic photo of what had been at that location previously, kind of looking through the hourglass, so to speak, because the repair on the clock has run its useful life, and the repairs on it are, you know, $4,000 to $5,000 at this point. It's just not worth it, and we have a digital kiosk right there on the corner. So, we're looking for Pillars of Pottstown to come forward with donations for that. And then, as was mentioned previously, we're working with the Housing Coalition. As I've mentioned before, our trash contract ends at the end of the year. So, we will be putting out a new bid prior to that, at the end of the year, for a new hauler or continuing the hauler that we have on January 1st. So, some of the things we're working with that, with the Housing Coalition on are penalties and how do we keep whoever we get here honest. So, we're working on creating an escalating penalty schedule for missed pickups that would put you in different categories. And in order to get out of the penalty system, you would have to have perfect pickups for six months at the same address. So, that's one, just one of the concepts that they've been very helpful in devising for us, and we've been working together with them quite well. And just a reminder to residents, if you have a trash complaint, please call Public Works and let them know. Escarrow has assigned an individual here to come in and essentially clean up after the regular trash crew, to take care of any missed pickups, to put the cans back where they belong, that kind of thing. But we do need the residents to report that so that we can address it. Same thing with potholes. Please call or email Public Works. If you have trash or property maintenance issues, please call or email the Licensing and Inspections Department, and we will have someone go out and take a look at it. With it being in midsummer here, just about, the weeds are getting a little out of control, so I would remind everyone to go out and take a look at your properties, make sure that they're being cut regularly. We will be having Ellen and I go out specifically to look at weeds in the next coming weeks. And then, just a reminder for the new business items that we have on the agenda tonight, we're going to have a combined meeting approach, so we would encourage dialogue between the councilors on each one of these topics. It's not going to be just like a regular voting meeting where we roll through and vote on them. Since we haven't discussed any of these items yet, we want to have a conversation, and Solicitor or I will kind of kick off each section, and then we'll turn that over to the council for discussion. If somebody is willing to make a motion on those items, then you would be able to do so at any time during that discussion. And that's it.
All right. Okay. So, under New Business, first topic is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to eliminate childcare facilities, et cetera. You want to address that?
Sure. So, we had the public hearing on this matter, so the ordinance is prepared. It is advertised. We went over what the ordinance will change in the downtown district. And unless there are questions from council, the ordinance can be adopted tonight with a formal motion. And if you choose not, you can wait till next month, but it's been advertised. And I think we've talked about this a number of times in the past, so nothing that's in the ordinance should really be surprising to council.
So, I'll make that motion then.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second as printed. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. B is an ordinance amending the rules and regulations to update and adopt the standard technical specifications.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is essentially unchanged since you've last seen it. The biggest item in there is to revise the water specifications for, to differentiate between existing water supplies and newly installed water supplies. For existing water supplies, if you have a damaged piece of that pipe, a leak somewhere in that pipe, you can now splice into that with an approved connection. In that case, I'll.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion and a second as printed. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. C is an amendment number three for a one-year extension of the contract between Prochamps and the Borough.
Yeah. So, for those who've been on council for a while, and C and D are actually somewhat related. So, just talk generally about both of those, and then council can decide how far you want to go with this. C, back in 2015, council enacted an ordinance that permits or requires the registration of vacant properties. It was done with the idea that there'd be a sliding scale, that if vacant properties weren't inhabited, there'd be a registration fee that would escalate over time to try and eliminate vacant properties and obviously blighted properties. Back in 2015, the ordinance was passed. Council, at the same time, hired Prochamps, which was an entity that was familiar with registering vacant properties. So, they became the administrator of that process. So, under that contract that was approved, it was an initial term of two years with three one-year renewals. So, every year, that's been renewed, and now we are at the point where council can vote to renew or extend that contract for one more year, so we'll take it the full five-year term. So, that's one of the items that's in front of you this evening is to extend that. And my understanding, in talking with Justin and the Licensing and Inspection Department, is that Prochamps have been doing a good job, to the extent they're able to register properties, collect fees. For those of you that were on council in 2015, if you remember, the idea was that the Borough doesn't pay anything for this because the fee is paid to Prochamp, and then a portion is remitted to the Borough. So, it's a no cost to the Borough for this contract. So, that's item C. At the same time, I guess there has been some discussion in Licensing and Inspection that they'd also like to change that ordinance to some degree. And part of the change would be to increase the amount of the registration fee from what it currently is. In addition, there's additional definitions they want to add to differentiate between a vacant property and a foreclosed property, so that a foreclosed property could be charged a higher fee than a vacant property. So, to do this, we would need to amend the ordinance. Now, you haven't seen any changes to that ordinance yet because we're still working on it. But item D, if you chose to move ahead with tonight, would be just the authorization to prepare the ordinance change that's being recommended both by Ellen and I and by Prochamps, who are administering the vacant property registration ordinance for the Borough. So, those are the items C and D that are kind of tied together, but certainly, at least from a staff perspective, there's no harm in item C to extend that initial contract for another year. The second motion would be to create an ordinance change, and that, obviously, the changes won't be implemented until you pass the ordinance. So, Prochamps would continue to work under the same criteria as they are today. But obviously, in the future, in the next month or two, if you decide to amend the ordinance, the changes can be implemented to the administration process. And I realize this is hitting you cold, so if you guys have questions, I'll try to answer what they are, but those are the two items that encompass C and D.
So, if we move it for today, do we have to vote on it at a later date, like August?
Yes. If you, well, if you vote for C tonight, that'll extend the contract. No further votes required for that because you've extended the existing contract.
Okay.
But D, you will see again, and D, you'll have to actually vote on approving the ordinance. Right now, you're just approving the preparation of the ordinance and the advertising of the ordinance, but you'll still have to vote on it. So, that would be next month, conceivably.
I remember approving this in 2015, but for some reason, I thought the company name was Community Champions. Was that?
You're correct. There was a name change, or the company evolved into this new name, so you're correct. There was a modification at some point, so good memory.
Yeah, I guess the last, I've heard really good things about them, and they really help us, you know, kind of, especially getting hold of, I guess, bank-owned properties as well, because they really know how to cut through the front tape and get to where we need them, so I have no problem making a motion to approve C.
Do I have a motion for, I think Ryan just made the motion for C, and Rita just seconded it. Oh, okay. So, we do have the motion and the second. Any further discussion on C? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it. Now, for D.
Well, as well, just, obviously, just to prepare.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this? This is just to move forward on it.
Yeah. I just want to add that this is a part of our continuing effort to crack down on some of these vacant properties here in town. And this is just another tool in our toolbox that we're using with the fees. There's another item on here that we'll get into, in the same vein, we're actually, you know, using a collection agency or a law firm to go after some of these properties to motivate them to either fix their properties up or turn them over to someone that will. Yeah. I'm all for that because I've been living across the street from the same Bird Down House for 10 years, so, back to 13, really, now that I think about it. 10 years without owner.
Any other questions? Okay. On item D, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any ayes have it. Okay. E.
Yeah.
Let me, let me take.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is also related, but this is obviously a little bit different topic than the first two. They're, Prochamps has used in the past a law firm to perform collection efforts for the folks that don't pay their registration fee. And so, they've recommended Breakpoint Law LLC for the purpose of collecting fees that aren't being voluntarily paid. In this case, and I'll speak for myself, and I'll let Justin speak for him, I've looked at some of the documents so far, and given the questions that I have, I would ask that we not take any action on this. I'd rather explore this a little further and provide you all the information, as well as any changes that might be proposed as a result of the review. Breakpoint Law is a Florida entity. I have some questions about their ability to practice law in Pennsylvania. I had some other questions with respect to the fee proposal that they had submitted. So, I would recommend that no action be taken on this. You allow us the time to have a further dialogue and submit to you for next month what we purport to be documents that would be at least acceptable to the Borough. As an aside, I know that we use Portnoy Law Associates to do a lot of collection for the Borough. Typically, Portnoy does tax collection or assessment or fee-based collections as opposed to what is being proposed here. So, my understanding is Portnoy wouldn't do this type of work anyway. So, if anybody thought, why aren't we using Portnoy? It's, this is a different type of collection that they wouldn't be interested in. So, anyway, that's my take on it. Justin may have some additional information.
I completely agree with that. I would suggest that we take the time to vet this proposal a little closer to make sure that it's the right fit for us. But one way or another, it's still an option that we're interested in pursuing, whether it's with Breakpoint or with a firm that is better representative. So, I would agree with that.
Okay. Hearing from our advisors, I would ask that no motion be made at this time. We'll follow up next month. Okay. F, looking at a four-year extension to the contract between the Borough of Pottstown and Olivet Boys and Girls Club.
Motion to table.
Yeah.
Sorry?
A motion to table.
On the grounds that Mr. Kirkland's not here, or?
Yeah, he should be here.
All right.
Okay.
I have a motion to table.
Unless there's.
Do I have a second?
Any reason why we need to take?
A second.
I have a motion to table and a second. Any discussion?
Actually, there is no discussion on a motion to table, so just call for the vote.
All right. All in favor to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So be it. Red G, and this is about a contract, number 162 Erie Street and Alley Sewer Improvements.
Yeah. So, this contract was a part of our water sewer bid previously. It was an alternate in that piece, and when that, we got the results back from the contract, it was higher than the grant amount that we had. So, what we did was we pulled this out of the water sewer project. That went forward independently. We re-scoped and rebid the stormwater project, and we. We re-scoped and rebid the stormwater project and we did get bids that came in at $278,000, So, we have a grant in the amount of $278,000 from Montgomery County Community Conservation District. And the low bid contractor is Abanesio. So, Abanesio is also the contractor that's going to be doing our roadway paving this year, so I think they were able to give us a better price because they're already here in town for that work. So, just to refresh, this project consists of underground drainage improvements, water quality inlet, and a driving surface aggregate, which will help the Borough partially meet DEP mandated MS4 requirements while reducing runoff onto private properties and improving the driving surface of the alley. So, we're looking for a motion to approve the award to Abanesio at $288,232.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any ayes have it. H is a motion to reappoint James Smale to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire July 22nd, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Smale, you have another six years. I, looking to grant request of Cameron Taylor to hold a block party on July 28, 2019, resulting in the closing of Lee Avenue between Feist Avenue and Spruce Street, subject to a review of the Police and Fire Departments.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. J is a motion to grant the request of Kingdom Life Church to conduct church service on July 28, 2019, resulting in the closing of North Franklin Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, subject to approval of the Police and Fire Departments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Did not get any complaints for last month, so it's fine with me.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any ayes have it. K is a motion to grant request of Red Horse Motoring Club to conduct its outdoor car show for August 3 and September 7, 2019, resulting in the additional street closure on High Street from York to Franklin Streets from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, subject to review and approval of the Police and Fire Departments. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, this, I think, would be a very good opportunity to encourage the businesses that are out on High Street to piggyback on these functions. And the reason why I say that is because I was out at the last motor club this past weekend at the show and I was amazed at the amount of people that were actually out and this was right before the storm. So, imagine what kind of business can be drawn in if you stayed open a little later. They didn't stay open too long. I don't know how long they stay open normally, but for a business to spend a couple extra hours out on and promoting, self-promoting, in a function like this would be perfect for this town. I encourage all the businesses to do that.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any ayes have it. Okay, L is a motion to grant the request of Red Horse Motoring Club to hold a beer garden in the Smith Family Plaza during the August 3 and September 7, 2019 car shows, subject to approval of the Police and Fire Departments and compliance with the Liquor Control Board Regulations.
What would be the times? They don't have times, like on the blockage of the street, it says from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So, how long are they going to have the beer garden open?
I don't want it show up at 11:00 and then close. It would be during the same time as the car show, so from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. That's what they've indicated in their letter here.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Okay.
Okay. This was curious. Thanks.
Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I motioned. Sorry, we didn't do that part.
Okay.
Anybody want a second? You want a second? Would you like a second? Okay.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. M, a motion to grant request of the Victory Christian Life Center resulting in the closing of North Washington Street between Chestnut Street and Rowan Alley for the National Night Out Event, August 6, 2019, from 3:00 PM to 8:30 PM, subject to approval of the Police and Fire Departments. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll see you at National Night Out. N is a motion to grant the request to hold a block party resulting in the closing of Belmont Street between 8th Street and Reynolds Avenue on August 10, 2019, rain date August 18, subject to review of the Police and Fire Departments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this?
Yeah, the time on that would be from 4:00 to 9:30 PM.
4:00 to 9:30.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to that? No. O is a motion to grant request of the First Baptist Church to conduct a Community Summer Fest on August 11, 2019, resulting in the closing of King Street from Charlotte Street to North Evans Street from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, subject to approval of the Police and Fire Departments.
Motion.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. P is a motion to grant request of Sly Fox Brewery to hold a half-mile run on September 2nd, 2019, resulting in the closing of High Street from...
Hanover to Adams.
Hanover to Adams.
Yeah.
Okay. From Hanover to Adams Street, subject to the approval of our Police and Fire Departments.
What time will it be?
Yeah, I was going to say, what are the times? There's no times on here.
I thought it was in the morning.
Yeah, it's in the morning. I apologize, we kind of got a lot of these last minute.
I know, Jeanie just said. She just said that.
8:00 AM to 9:30 AM.
September 2nd is a Monday?
Labor Day.
Oh, Labor Day, okay.
Yeah, Labor.
8:00 to 9:30.
Correct.
You have an hour?
8:00 AM to 9:30.
So, it's like an hour and a half.
So, you have an hour and a half to run a half mile.
Wow.
Okay. I think I could do that.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any ayes have it. 15, asking for a motion to pay our bills in the amount of $2,216,553.76.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll pay our bills. Before we go on to the announcements from our councilors, there will be an executive session this evening, no action will be taken, so, and the topic is still collective bargaining. So, when we adjourn here, that's it. So, announcements. Counselor, yeah, Lindsey.
I'm first this time? I'm excited. I wasn't even prepared for this. I'm always last, but that's okay. I don't have that much because I was in California because my son graduated. He's a drill instructor for the United States Marine Corps, so I'm very proud. So, I didn't do too much. So, I was in San Diego and then I went to Vegas and won $250. If I'd have won more, you wouldn't have seen me today. Just kidding. Okay, so I went to the farmer's market, that was nice. And then I went to the box derby with the little cars. I was washing my car and I said, oh, so and then I ended up watching that. And power, again, we went to Harrisburg. Last year when I went, before I was on council, there was one bus. There were three buses this year. Three buses, people, those three buses. Just saying. So, I was hoping that this year would be the last year, but unfortunately, we might have to go again and we may have 20 buses. So, if the Borough want to donate money for a bus, talk to me. So, and it was really inspiring. Some of the kids was talking about their situations in their schools. This one little girl made me cry. I had my pom-poms, I was a bus captain, so I had to entertain my bus and keep them going, motivated, okay? And the Fourth of July Parade, Dawn and I were in the Fourth of July Parade. We rode on the carousel. They introduced the new, what was that carousel?
It was a horse seat.
Yeah.
It was a seahorse.
Yes, yes. So, we've seen that, we've seen them unmounted off the truck and then they put it on the carousel and the carousel was packed. The whole event was amazing and special shout-out to the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Rotary, the Amys, Amy Francis and Amy Wolf. It was a great turnout. Even though the rain, people still stood under tents, we was pitching water. I feel like Gilligan because we was trying to get all this water out of here, but it was great. And it ended with a fantastic display of fireworks. I went to the Taps on the riverfront. The night I got, I came back from Vegas on Sunday, Sunday from the airport to the Taps. I wanted to catch it before it ended. And, let me see, oh, in the alley on High Street, that was nice. Elvis was really great. I tell people Elvis wasn't dead, so he was there. He sang, he was really good. I seen Jeanie, she was there too, she was there. So, it was really nice going on in Pottstown with the car show and everything. Even though it rained, people still was out there, so it was really nice. I was really happy to see the crowd coming out with the alley. That was really nice, so that's the end of mine.
Very good.
See?
Counselor Paez, any announcements?
No, but I would like to make a comment about the potholes. They're getting bad, real bad.
Thank you.
The bike line, I complain that they use it, people don't like it, but still the children, the teenagers drive it in different, other way. And my car, we have big problems.
I agree.
I agree with the lady, they wish to pay a lady a little more, but at whose service.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Prosser.
Well, I'd like to thank the Amys too and all the organizers for the go-forth for the firework presentation, although it was visiting family in Illinois, but a lot of mosquitoes out there. I mean, I prefer the rain, but I think they're still, you know, taking donations. I think their budget is still a little bit under.
Oh, yes, that's right, yes.
So, you go to their Facebook page and you can figure out what to donate there.
Yes, go forth, yes.
Okay. Vice President Kulp.
I went to the Trails on Tap. That was really, really nice and relaxing, nice places to sit, you could watch the river. I don't think they could put any kayaks in because it was a little running a little bit too fast, but it was very, very nice. And there's so much going on in Pottstown, it's amazing.
Counselor Lebedinsky.
It sounds like everybody's covered everything that I wanted to say except congratulations to the U.S. Women's National Soccer Team.
Bringing that home.
Yes.
That's it.
I have a lot of thanks to give out to all the people who've been working so hard for everything that's been great so far in the beginning of July, to go forth to Rotary Club, to everyone involved in helping bring about the Fourth of July celebration, and then to be followed up Saturday night with the car show. Red Horse did a great job at that in spite of Mother Nature. We've just got to keep going forward. And with that, meeting adjourned.